Welcome to our November 25 meeting. We always start with the public participation at Town of Hatfield Select Board meetings. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all public meetings of the Town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the Town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate during meetings of the Select Board, and a attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. For the public's information, this meeting is being recorded under announcements. Just a reminder, December 2nd, we have a special town meeting. It's extremely important that you attend. We'll be getting more into that discussion under topic one. Also, I want to extend thank you from the board to everyone for Thanksgiving and wish you and yours a very special holiday season during Thanksgiving this particular week. Those are my announcements. Do my colleagues have any announcements?
No.
Okay.
I'll add one if that's all right, Mr. Chair. We do have the second annual tree lighting that will take place on December 6th. The Council on Aging runs that, so thanks to Jerry Rogers and all of her team for doing a lot of amazing work to make that happen. That'll be December 6th at 5:00 p.m. right here at Town Hall at the tree out back. That'll be very nice. A lot of entertainment, I think, crafts for kids, all sorts of things.
Thank you for reminding me of that. All right. Anybody here for public forum? You're here for public forum, come up to the microphone.
My name is George Fenn, and I'm responsible for special projects in Massachusetts for Local Power. Local Power is a company based in Williamsburg, although we're active in California and New York and Massachusetts. And for 30 years, we've worked in decarbonization, working with municipalities to create implementable systems, leading systems, cutting edge. For the last five years, we've become interested in waste specifically as a source of carbon, but also as a public health crisis with PFAS, the problem with PFAS. So we became interested in trying to find a way to deal with this, and we found a company which has a technology which we believe would be a solution for this problem. And we'd like to build a facility in this region, Western Massachusetts. And while it would be privately funded and built and maintained, we are seeking interest from municipalities, minimal interest, just to achieve essentially a kind of basic security of supply of waste. And so my reason to come here this evening is to ask if you'd be interested to have a presentation to go into detail about this project.
Well, under public forum, we can't make any comment, but the best thing is to contact our town administrator and get you on the agenda if you care to be on the agenda.
All right. Wonderful.
Is anybody else here for public forum? Go right ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you so much to Luke for the Hatfield Hill Cemetery. I know it hasn't been mentioned publicly, but you helped get some steps there for the seniors to get up into that cemetery. You were very unbelievably helpful in getting us the steps for that, and it was no cost to the town, and it was just done out of generosity, and thank you so much. That was very appreciative.
Absolutely. Bill Engelhardt was a huge part of that as well, so good shout out to Bill as well.
Anybody else for public forum? If not, we will move to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion on the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the November 12th, 2025, and the November 17th, 2025 meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion made, motion seconded. Any discussion? Own favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, under posted business, we'll go to topic one, special town meeting. At this time, I want to thank Luke, Sean Berry, and Andrew for making a video about the reasons behind our special town meeting. It's very informative. I hope everybody takes the opportunity to go to Hatfield Community TV YouTube online and watch that video before the meeting. And I can't stress the importance of making sure we get a forum of 75. Otherwise, we will be unable to set the tax rate, and we want to be able to set the tax rate. Otherwise, we're in trouble, and we'll have to keep trying until we get it right. So under that topic, I open it up. If either of my colleagues like to say something about the special town meeting.
Yeah, I think we stressed it a couple different times in the public information video that we made, but one of the major topics is that this vote isn't going to impact taxes. It's essentially just moving money from accounts and closing some accounts to be able to cover the deficit in our budget. And really, the deficit was because of some clerical errors with Chapter 90 money, as well as not receiving some state aid that we were anticipating. So this is simply just moving money around, and we need a town vote to be able to do that. So we hope that we can get a nice, strong quorum of at least 75 December 2nd, 6:00 p.m. So we encourage the public to come.
I support it. I hope everybody can make it, or at least 75 can make it.
Okay, what we've been doing is trying to get as much information out there as possible. We've posted the warrant on Facebook and the website. We've created a page on website and information on meeting, the warrants and the handouts. We've posted event on the town website. We've also had a news story, Gazette discussing it. We've had the recording. We've also emailed boards and commissioners. We're trying to post on the signboard outside Town Hall, the message board. The only question I have to my colleagues is, is this something that should go on code red? As a reminder to the whole town that the meeting will be on Tuesday, and it's important. In the past, there's been code red messages sent out about special town meetings or other events, like if the schools closed or something like that. I mean, there's always a difference on what we want on code red. We don't want to put everything on code red, but since this is a very special meeting, maybe there should be something on code red on Monday to remind the residents that please come.
Yeah. Yeah, that would just be, that would mean everybody that's on code red would get a phone call.
Right, it'd be a phone call.
Door text or something like that.
Yeah.
Be a nice, strong reminder.
I think that's an appropriate use.
I support that.
Okay. We'll move forward.
I'll speak to the police, to the fire chief. That should be fine.
Yes, Joe.
You know, I just wanted to point out, I was talking to somebody the other day that they said, why do we always have such a negative needing money or something? And I pointed out that, you know, 22 years as town moderator, people would always look at the down years, the bad years, or bad news, or news we had to fix something. I just want to say that I think it was like 10 years, five years, and I think three years ago, I reminded them that it went the other way. Our free cash did give us a little extra kick. We did have some years of, what a surprise, we had some extra money. We put it into stabilization. We put it into free cash. So we can always focus on the bad news of the day, but it's so easy to forget the good news of yesterday. So we do have some good years, and those good years are what helps us fix some little issues that pop up like this. Now, it's maybe not a little issue, but a few years ago, we had the state come in and take over our finances and help us come to fix it much better. Now, when we have a mistake made or an oversight made or something, somebody missed, we catch it right away within a few months. Now, it might kick into the next year, but we catch it pretty quickly. And how fortunate we are for that. So we got to also remember, we've had some good years too, and we will have more good years. We just thank you guys for helping find this and fix it very quickly. Much appreciation.
And I believe also we're changing the way we're reporting things to be more in line with DOR's requirements on this. And again, some of the money was money that we anticipated, but the state didn't give us, and some of the money were items we're not taking from stabilization or free cash requests on the articles. We're able to cut within the budget. We don't think it's going to be, it'll be a minimal impact to the town.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, that's something else to stress, and in that public information video, it goes over it quite a lot. The cuts that we're making are line items that we have over budgeted for in the past, one of them being like vocational tuition and transportation. We know that's going to come in about $75,000 under, so we're going to use $50,000 of that over budget to help fund this. The assistant treasurer, we are not filling that position through the end of July, or through the beginning of July, so that leaves us about $50,000 there as well. The assessors opened up $63,000 in overlay surplus that we will be able to help fund some of this, as well as a various multitude of other things, but those are the three big, the three big ones that are allowing us to fill that gap. So we're not doing anything crazy, like shutting streetlights off or anything like that. There's not going to be any noticeable impact. It's mostly just moving money around, out of some of our over budgeted things into this to make up that deficit, and then closing out some project accounts, such as the Town Hall garage renovation, the drainage project on Raymond Avenue, the new trash compactor that's just about wrapped up at the DP, or at the transfer station. And then there's some stuff from the fire department, such as the laptop for the ambulance and the SCBA that had remaining funds in it, that we're hoping to close those accounts out and then transfer that money in. So again, like you said, Chair Jaworski, we're not going to have to touch free cash or stabilization to be able to fund this deficit. And again, it's not going to affect taxation, and we're not asking for any more money from the townspeople. It's clerical.
And I do want to thank Andrew and his team for coming up with this suggestion of where we could find the money, so I appreciate that. It's been a group effort with everybody looking at things and working together, and I do appreciate the whole, the whole crew getting together and working out something. Of course, hopefully in the future with, we're going to be changing our spreadsheets, we're going to be changing our information or data. So my only question on this meeting is, we should be posting it earlier. We usually, on a special meeting, the board usually meets like a half an hour earlier, so we may have to post it like at 5:30 for the board to meet at the elementary school in case we want to go over who's going to do the articles or anything like that.
That should be posted. We've posted meetings for finance committee and Select Board at 5:30 at Hatfield Elementary School.
In case any of yous, any questions from the moderator or from Tom Mullins? I assume Tom Mullins will be there or not. I'm not sure.
Tom will not be there. He's arranged for the city solicitor in Northampton, Alex Seawald, to fill in for him.
Heather Paul's great. We've had him before, so that'll work out. So do we have any questions pertaining to the articles, the way they're presented, or the process? Everything's all set up for the elementary school with Connor, and we're all good to go, right?
Yes, we have a room request in, they know how we want to set up, that all should be fine. I'll make sure we're good for chairs and everything else, but it should be fine.
Okay, so as far as this topic, are we missing anything else on this topic, or can we move to the next topic?
I think you'll, you can expect to see a final version of the motions from me. We'll get that finalized, but what you see in your package should be pretty close to what we'll do. We'll have that printed for everybody, along with any handouts. Handouts are getting approved by the moderator. We should be good to go.
Okay, and I do hope everybody goes to Hatfield Community TV YouTube and see the presentation from Luke, Andrew, and Sean on what this is all about. And it's some, it's moral of a bookkeeping issues with us and the state that have to be taken care of so we can set the tax rate. And without that, we're in, we're in trouble. Okay, so my colleagues have anything else on this before we move?
No.
Okay, we'll move to topic two, which is introduction to Ecode 360. I believe we have some folks here for this topic, along with Joe and Nancy. I don't know if you need three chairs up there, or...
All we're going to do is explain about the Ecode 360. In the last, the last presentation we came to, we explained what Ecode 360 was about and how it could help us. So I'll repeat again, I'll try to sum it up real quick. When we go to town meeting, all we're asking townspeople at the first step, according to the process that was told to us in a little bit more simple terms, according to town attorney, any change to our bylaws needs townspeople's vote. The first step is to change our format, not change any bylaws, just change the format it's in. To do that, we need their permission. So where we thought we could do this presentation this year, we got to wait till next year, and that gives us time with Andrew to work on how we're doing it. So any, and I want to please be very careful of this, any bylaw recommended changes coming from the Select Board or departments has nothing to do with what we're working on. We're reviewing our town bylaws to bring them up to 2025, 2026 wording and verbiage, but we're not changing, if you need to change bylaws, that's up to you and the townspeople, and I get that. That's a normal process every year. But what we're trying to do is come up with a bylaw process where people can go online and do a search query, search up by word, anything they want. We have nouns, adjectives, and words that are so outdated because it's just been band-aided for 50 years. Nobody's gone through this to the degree that we've been doing this year. So we came across Ecode 360, and we found out that there's, I don't know, almost half the towns or close to half the towns in the state?
159 publicly accessible codes on Ecode 360, another 17 being built out of 351.
So what they do is they put together our bylaws in a format and put it into the new one. So what we'd look to do next year is come to town meeting is to say, you've given us the permission to change the format, not to look at it, but next year, we can have two forms. Our old bylaws written in 50, 60, 70 pages of what they were, and the new format where you can look it up online and access it, and it's the same, but if we can evolve into the new way, we can compare ourselves to other towns. So when you see a board or committee come up, or somebody wanting a new bylaw made up or create a bylaw, through them, we can compare it to other like-kind towns. And they would go through looking at the whole legal process, so we wouldn't even have to use our town attorneys to do all that research. They have it. So as I, as I pointed out, Ecode 360, and we were talking a few minutes ago, they're a nonprofit, and I like to remind people of this, they're the same company that's put together the international building codes, the international residential codes, the fire code, international fire code, international energy conservation code, and plumbing code. And there's probably more, but they do this for parts of the entire nation to help out, and they're able to do this for our town at a pretty unbelievably low cost. So do you want to talk about your Ecodes?
Yeah, sure. Like, to start, you know, it's kind of who we are, how we got to this point.
Cool.
Is it okay if I stand? I was sitting for three hours.
Sure.
Thank you. My name is Zachary Dumont. I work for General Code. We're a division of the International Code Council. We're based out of Western New York, in the city of Rochester. I also happen to live in Rochester, New Hampshire, so it's only a little bit confusing, but I cover, I cover all of New England. So every single municipality in that make up New England, I try to help them with their ordinances, with their bylaws, with their rules and their regulations. And as a municipal codifier, the idea that we want to get people to get comfortable with is that sometimes locally drafted compilations of legislation are not always the easiest things to understand and to navigate through, and for your clerk to be able to go back and track the history, so when somebody comes in and says, I want a copy of X, Y, Z from 1952, it might take some time. What we want to do is help communities transform how the look, fit, and feel of their regulations are, so that when you do adopt a new bylaw or amend a pre-existing one, it's very easy to go in and say, hey, we're looking at Chapter 25 dogs, and it's Article 3 that we want to update, instead of right now, it's probably the process of a warrant Article 2, and you have eight paragraphs of text, and we're trying to figure out what actually is happening. So in codifying, we have a couple of different ways to do it. We have a comprehensive project where we can go through and provide a substantive review of the editorial and legal framework of your existing code, to come back and say, hey, you know, you might be out of date here, you might be out of alignment here with state statutes, whatever it might be. We all know the MBTA zoning law's been contentious in a lot of communities, so when we go through and we look at the existing legislation, we can look at your state statutes and come back and say, hey, here's some areas where you might be out of date, some things that you can look through to either correct or update, or just leave them as is if you want to, but at least you know that they're out there. The second way we codify is just focusing on the format and the structure of the code. Regardless of which way you go about, you get something that looks like this at the end. This is a real, true municipal code. In this case, it's for the Town of Rantham. This book's about five years out of date, but every community that I work with in New England gets at least one of these at the end, so you have a real, official, hardbound copy. And of course, what you folks have heard about, we have the online version, which is Ecode 360. It's been about late 2006, really kind of 2008, and we've been trucking through ever since. I'm going to bring this up to the board if you want to thumb through it. It's a real legal code. You can see the structure, you can see the stylization, and we brought one because they're about 10 pounds a piece, and I don't like carrying more than one. The idea, though, is that should you choose to move forward with General Code, when all is said and done, it's typically about 18 to 24 months, about the time you get town meeting scheduled, get the AG to sign off, then we send everything to the printer, you'll have one of those books. It'll sit in your clerk's office. When you go to town meeting, you can pull it out. When your folks have questions or concerns about their bylaws, or they want to know what's being regulated at the town level, they can just quickly go online and grab a copy for themselves. It's freely accessible to the public 24/7. You don't require a special login. You don't need any sort of special computer skills to get to it. And what 99% of our communities do is they'll take the hyperlink to the Ecode site and just embed it on their town website. It clicks over, folks do their research, they close out of a tab, they go on their way. As your clerk gets new warrant articles adopted and filed with the AG, she'll send them out to us, we'll incorporate them into the code, and then for every book that you have, we'll also send printed inserts so you can keep the physical copies up to date. Really stress, you don't really need more than two or three of those books. We have a couple towns that order 15, 20, one that bought 40, and it's not fun. So usually, one or two are good, and then everybody goes online. What's great about having an online platform to have your bylaws accessible is anytime your committees change, you turn over, whether it's the Select Board, whether it's Planning Board, and everybody's jumping to be on a planning board. You can quickly go online and just download the chapters that pertain to their subject matter. They have a quick copy that you can make in-house. You don't have to go out and buy a $400 volume, worry about reprinting things every so often. You can just go online and get it. It also works great on mobile devices, iPads, tablets, and of course, your laptops. How are we doing so far? Because there's a lot I can talk about.
Well, I think it's good, because, I mean, I want people to understand, this has been like a two or three-step process. Before we go and change bylaws, we want to know where everything is and get it organized.
Yeah.
So this is the first step, just to get it organized somewhat.
Yes.
It's sort of like, right now, what we have is like a, an office with one filing cabinet that's overfilling, and there's files all over the place. So I want people to think of it in that perspective, and now we're going to organize it.
One nice, clean-looking filing cabinet, one nice, clean-looking vault. The way we codify, so we have two different ways to do it. For you folks, if the primary concern right now is to just get a code restructured and online and not do any of the big substantive stuff, the reformatting project is great. Usually, closer to that 18-month timeline instead of the full 24 months, we go through the first phase. We put together what we call the organizational analysis. That lays out the new recommended table of contents and overall structure and style for your bylaws. So everything, whether it's, you know, a simple dog, or a simple dog bylaw, or all of your planning and zoning and subdivision regulations, whatever they might be, we're going to review everything. We'll break them apart, and we'll reformat them into what we think makes the most sense. We'll kick that off to the town, whether it's the Bylaw Review Committee lead, or something with your town admin. You folks will review it, let us know what your thoughts are. If you see things that need to be tweaked or readjusted, we'll do that for you. Then we'll move on to a preliminary draft, which will have all the substantive text of your new code. Then after you approve the preliminary draft, we'll do a final draft, then that's what goes to town meeting. We'll also save you the headache of writing the warrant articles. We'll do that for you. Then you go to town meeting, hopefully it's all thumbs up. You let us know, the AG approves it, and three months later, we get everything printed and online and ready to go. If you do the comprehensive project, there will be a substantive review phase that occurs prior to any drafts, at which point you'll see any questions or comments or thoughts or concerns that we might have. You can elect not to make any changes, and of course, just go forward with the reformatting and use the substantive review as a workbook for things to work on over the next two, three, five years, whatever makes sense to you. Or if there were some mission-critical items in there that you thought, well, hey, here's a huge liability, we could go in and mark up those changes, so when it goes to town meeting, you're only talking about a couple of small changes, instead of saying, hey, we want flying cars and Waymos on our streets, or we want traffic lights, right? Nobody wants this. But there are a couple different ways to do it. It's really just a matter of what you folks as a body think makes the most sense for your citizens and constituents, and then we'll put together...
We'll be depending a lot on our committee to help guide us through that process, because we highly recommend that they be part of that process, which they already have been, so.
We recommend it too. The fact that you guys already have the Bylaw Review Committee thinking about this, you're already leagues ahead of communities who just haven't even gotten to this step yet. We've been codifying for almost 70 years now, 1,250-ish municipalities in New England, and there are only about 350 that I've chosen to codify. We still have towns that can't get a committee of three or four people together to sit down and say, what laws do we have, and how do we make them better? So you guys are already leagues ahead. This will get you that next step. This will get you online and into the digital age with your bylaws, and we have some communities who have codified with us for over 50 years, who are still actively supporting them today, so you don't have to worry about the structure or styles changing too much year over year, because we try to keep things consistent.
I think that'll be great, because I know even being on the board, there's questions that come up, and there's been many a times I've been going to the bylaws, trying to find them. Where is that particular bylaw so we can understand it?
Yeah.
This will make it a lot easier for future boards, or even the present board, if it finally gets...
It should be as simple as, hey, this was amended by Article 12 in, let's think in the future, 2036. Well, great, I can go in and I can pull that real quickly, as opposed to, let me go back and look at paper files, or even the Vellum files from 18, whatever, and still not have an idea of what it was.
But having a consistent outline and, you know, the same language throughout all the bylaws across all committees is good.
Exactly.
It's super helpful. I'm also on the Conservation Commission, and just within our own, there's four different styles of texts and five different types of language, and it's a disaster, you know? So being able to update everything and have a similar layout and have it be searchable is just going to be fantastic. So I think we all very strongly support this project.
If I could just explain that Elena Wilcox as town clerk, Nancy Shea as, you know, lifelong town resident, retired nurse, Greg Gannon on your board, we've got Kyle Scott, building inspector, and, you know, we've got a lot of areas covered that we've all been in this town for a long time. We've got Andrew helping out for sure. And if anybody wants to take a look at an example, they can take a look at Hadley's, just Google up Hadley's bylaws, and they can take a look at what we're talking about. And they've left room for, if you see like Bylaw Number 10, you're going to see a whole bunch of spaces, and it's for future bylaws if people want to add them without adding and changing all the numbers in the future. But whatever we come up with is going to go through your board first, and then it's going to go to town. So we're not making a decision, we're just trying to do all the homework to the best degree we can. So our first step is town meeting this year to just get the permission to do... So our first step is town meeting this year to just get the permission to do this.
And just to be clear, that's town meeting in May, in this special town.
Right, in May, in May. And then next year, the following year, would be to try to accept what we're looking at. So do you ladies have anything to add?
No, it's great to hear the support, I think, because, you know, we tripped on... We did, we just tripped over this, yeah. But to see the ability to bring forward organization and clarification from what is not terribly.
And it's going to include all of our zoning bylaws, because that almost doubles the process, but...
Yes.
I think also, like, once it's organized, it'll make the process of review a lot easier and seamless, and you can find stuff that is redundant or anything like that, or where the legality language needs to be changed and things like that. So I think we're all in very much support of this, and this was a great introduction, so thank you.
For reference, I looked at the general bylaws, zoning bylaws as amended through 2025. Border Health Regulations Regarding Tobacco Use, 2015, Well Regulations, 2017, Subdivision, 2019, and the Department of Public Works Rules and Regs amended in 2010. So you've got a good smattering of legislation there, probably about 300 or so pages. We'd consider this a complete code, since you're doing general zoning and everything else in between. And then as you develop your laws over time, if ever there's a new section or subject matter, you want to regulate cannabis as its own separate chapter, you have room to do that. So it can shrink and grow as the town shrinks and grows.
And I think also, if we had to have our town attorneys review all this and do all this, it would cost many, many thousands of dollars more than that.
Yeah, I'm sure they're not complaining.
No, no, I get that.
But no, we try to offer a very budget-friendly, very streamlined method. When we start this project, most important thing, two signatures from you, two signatures from us, and then we're off and running. But we will invoice the project cost over the duration. So in some cases, communities can finance over two fiscal years to lessen any immediate budget impact. There's also a little bit more easing into it as well, which we like. But generally, we try to get you as close to, you know, bottom dollar as we can, because we want you to have a great experience and a great service. But we recognize that these are tax dollars, and I say that as somebody who used to have to draft municipal budgets.
But as comprehensive as this sounds, what is the price range of that? Just so people listen.
It's like about 14 and a half thousand, which, from the packet that we were presented, which I think is very, very reasonable, and...
And that's the setup, that then there's a maintenance yearly.
Maintenance yearly, after that, looks like it's about 1,300, so...
Yeah, which is pretty affordable.
Very affordable, I think. So I mean, we can take a look at budget line items and stuff where we can include that. Maybe we can include it as part of a technology line or something along those lines. But yeah, we'll start trying to figure out a way to fund this, and it sounds like it's something that most people would support, so...
Some communities, when it comes to the actual budgeting process, will stick it under the admin's budget, just as like a code maintenance sign or just, you know, code or codification outright. Other communities choose to put it in under the clerk's. It's really up to you. What I would recommend, though, is if you are adding anything to her budget, be mindful of the fact that it's multiple departments with bylaws that will be impacted. So just want to be aware of that. But it's, you can do it any dozen ways.
Just a clarification, and we've talked about how we would maybe start with the reformatting and not do anything else. I think there's been some guidance from General Code about maybe trying to prioritize the full version of the project, rather than doing one phase and one then another. It might be better to do the full codification, if that's the direction you want to go, because otherwise, you're kind of duplicating steps.
The comprehensive project, which the base price is $14,995, $14,995, generally, we get you a better value in the long run, because you're doing everything all at once. It's one project, one set of project fees, one set of attorney's fees, one set of editor's fees, all wrapped up in one. You can do the reformatting project, you can supplement your code over time, once it's live, just time and materials it takes to integrate the new changes, whether it's, you know, a year from now or 20 years from now, sending an invoice when the work is done. We could even, if you just did the reformatting project, you could come back five years later, we could do a standalone legal review at that point in time, if you wanted our opinion. But for most communities, I'd say it's probably about 85% will do the comprehensive project, because it's all wrapped up in one. And then the other 15% or so will just do the reformatting, because that's what the town's appetite is for. You folks will know better than what I do if you have folks in town who want to get things updated and modernized right now, immediately, or the folks who like things the way they are. It's the best way to say it.
And I did want to point out that as a board, we're talking with most every board possible about them to think about what they would need, or what they would like to have looked at or thought about or changed or considered. And we're going to be doing this for the next year coming. We don't charge for that. But, you know, it's helpful to get every board aware of what we're trying to accomplish in the end, so...
Yeah, if you folks do want to do the comprehensive project, and you have what we like to call the naughty list, all the things, hey, your planner knows that this is bad, or your building officer knows that they're not happy with it, send us that naughty list before we start, so when we start that substantive review, we can be mindful, oh, right, they wanted examples of whatever it might be.
And we've been accumulating that.
I just have a question, if we did the full codification or codification, would that, that would not be at this next town meeting? That would take longer for you to do all that.
Yeah, okay, so it's about 18 to 24 months, start to finish. So we can kick off the project whenever you're ready. If you want to wait till the May town meeting to get the approval and the money from the voters, great. We can start July 1. That is very, very common in Massachusetts. I would say every project I have done in the last three years has been that way, except for one. If we were to start in July of 2026, most likely, the code draft from a comprehensive code project, you'd see probably end of 27, 2027 at the earliest, maybe early May of 2028. It's really going to depend on how much do we have to update, amend, and restructure? And then also, when we finish the draft and it's ready to go to town meeting, how close are we to the next one? Sometimes we get it where we missed it by a month, other times we get it where we're two months early, so you can get it in and go. So odds are, it'll end up either at an autumn or a spring town meeting. It just depends on how quickly we can move through it. What I do like to say is the faster you folks do your work, the faster we'll try to get our work done. But we do have three editors for Massachusetts, so they juggle about five to six projects apiece, so just bear with them.
Well, I think all we need is town people's permission at annual town meeting to say, "We can look at this and change..."
I think now, I think we only need that.
Okay, there's no legal requirement for it.
We would just need their approval once the product is done for bylaws. But because that's a big ask, you really want to notify people, you know, as you go along each step, which I think, you know, you're doing, we're doing right now. Yeah, I think, I think that's good.
I have found generally that in the case where we're talking about going to town meeting, it is, "Hey, we need X thousand dollars for this project." And while you're introducing the article, "Hey, this is what we expect to get out of this," so folks are aware and they're educated prior to making that vote. Which obviously, you want to give them all the information you can. And we have 159 codes you can look at for examples.
Well, I do want to thank you for your presentation, I appreciate it. And I do want to thank the committee for the work you put into this, because I think the product at the end is going to be well worth getting for this town and making it easier for people to find, you know, the bylaws and find stuff like that.
Absolutely. So you folks have a proposal, sorry, you folks have a quote that was valid for six months, the date I gave it to you. At some point in the next three-ish months or so, let me know what project path you want to do, whether it's the comprehensive or the reformatting. From there, it'll take about two weeks to get the actual proposal put together, and I apologize in advance, it's going to be about 32 pages. But then, once you guys sign and return that to me, my vice president and production manager will sign off and turn it back to you. And then within 30 business days thereof, we'll have an editor assign a primary project manager, and we'll get the ball rolling. Also, as working with us, you can call on me whenever you would like. I'm always happy to come out. I don't bill for any of my time. You won't get an invoice for me being here tonight, you won't get an invoice for me being here 10 years from now. You can call whenever, except when the Patriots are playing, because they're actually doing something this year.
I'm hoping we get some recommendations from our committee on which way we should go on this.
Yes, no problem.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zachary, for coming out.
Cheers. Oh, I have a good back.
Hey. Topic three, change of manager for Coswalk Casmirza, better known as the Polish Club. We approved this previously, so I just need a motion on this.
I'll make a motion to approve the change of manager. I'll second that.
Okay, motion made, motion seconded, any discussion?
No.
Out in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Topic four.
If you wouldn't mind, could we just take Tammy real quick, because she's been impatient. She would be topic six.
Okay, Tammy, sure. We'll take you out of order, we'll go right to topic six.
And we'll go back to five and then to four. That's the way we'll do it tonight.
So I have a proposal to increase both of my part-time employees, just due to the fact that they're putting in extra effort with my cut for the assistant treasurer for this year until July. So I'm just looking to increase them, to compensate them for all the extra work that they're putting in in my office.
That sounds reasonable. I mean, you are cutting that position until July, so the workload has to be picked up on others. And since you have a couple people that are willing to take on the workload, I don't have a problem with the increase. I'll open for a discussion to my colleagues.
I'll just say, we do have the budget for this. This would not increase the budget for this position.
Yes, it's within my budget line.
It's within the budget, yeah.
And we even do still have some room in that assistant treasurer position of the 50K that we plan to cut, in case we need to dip into that. We really shouldn't be. This fits within the treasurer staff line.
Now, how does that work when that position's still...
Right, that was my only question, if we should make it a stipend rather than an hourly pay increase.
I think there's two ways we could deal with it. We could either do a stipend for this year, so it's understood as being temporary, or we could just plan to then not give that position colas next year, too, which probably wouldn't completely even out, but that's another option available. Is you do like an early increase in the position now and plan not to do a salary adjustment.
So, how you look at that, Tammy? If it's a stipend for the additional work until you hire somebody, or do you feel that the responsibilities of the individuals you want to increase after July will stay at a higher level, or...
I think that at July, once we can hire the new assistant treasurer collector, I think that their work will probably stay similar to what they'll actually be doing now, because the assistant treasurer collector is going to end up taking on other stuff. With our increased water sewage billing when we go quarterly, we're going to have more to be done in the office. So we're going to actually have increased work come next year.
A reasonable answer. But that goes for everybody in town, and is this, are the hours going to increase also?
Not unless Brenda's hours are not going to increase. If we find Lori, we maybe need her an extra day or two. You know, we'll ask her to pick up an extra day, but we should still have enough within the budget line to pay her out.
Their hours will probably go down.
Yeah, she's hourly, so, yeah.
Their hours will go down after the person on board.
Yes, she'd go back down to her normal hours.
Any other questions? And I do want to support our folks in Town Hall, or that have to take on additional responsibilities and duties. And I know that office, your office, is probably one of the busiest offices in the town, because you guys go through all payroll, all taxes, all billing, everything goes through there. So that's one reason I really don't have a problem, because I know once, once these folks take on the additional responsibilities, they'll continue working at that higher level. And I don't think the increase you're asking for is that much personally. But that's just my opinion. I don't know how my colleagues feel about it.
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
I'm okay with it, and I trust that the person in charge of that department has good judgment, and I support you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that being said, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a pay increase of $1.29 an hour for Lori Composio and $1.93 an hour for Brenda Keir.
I'll second that.
Motion made, motion seconded, any discussion? Out in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Tammy. And thank you, Tammy, for all you do. I mean, you put a lot of time and effort in yourself, and we do appreciate it, even though we may not say it all the time. We do appreciate all the work you do, Tammy.
So if you wouldn't mind, going next to topic five, we do have someone online here to speak with us this evening, if that's all right with you.
That's fine, that's fine. We can go to topic five.
So this is another interesting thing, that we kind of have a balance tonight of things that we needed to do more urgently, and then things that we can look at moving forward. This is a great opportunity for the town called Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy. It's a program run by Mass Development, which is my former employer. It's long enough away that I don't have to disclose any conflicts of interest, but I know a lot of the team there, and they do a great job with this program. So we are lucky enough to have a representative from Mass Development with us here tonight, Connor, who has a quick presentation he'd love to go through with us, to kind of talk about how CPACE works, and then what the obligation is for the town, what some of the benefits are for the town, and what it takes to opt into this program. So I'll let Connor take it from here, if you can hear, see, and speak to us.
Hi, folks, can you hear me all right?
Sounds great.
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you, Andrew, for that introduction, and thank you for letting me join tonight, especially join remotely, I do appreciate it. But I'm Connor Glassheen, I'm an assistant vice president and program coordinator of Green Finance at Mass Development. And we oversee the Massachusetts CPACE program, which is Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy. And as Andrew mentioned, I do have a presentation I can share with you guys.
You should be able to share your screen, Connor. There's a button in the middle that says, "Share Screen," I think, if you see it.
Yeah, it's there, but it won't let me go from there. The option to share is kind of blacked out, let me try again. How about that?
Nope.
Can you guys see my screen now?
I don't think so. Wait.
I think I'll use the screen.
Let me see if it's options.
How about now?
So we see your screen, yeah, that should be perfect.
There we go.
There we go.
We're in now.
All right.
Very good.
Sorry, thank you for bearing with me with the technical issues. So if you're not familiar with who Mass Development is, we are the Commonwealth Development Finance Agency and Land Bank. We work with businesses, nonprofits, financial institutions, communities to stimulate economic growth throughout Massachusetts. We promote capital investment and economic development by providing financing and development solutions. In fiscal year 2025, we finance or manage over 400 projects, generating an investment of more than $4.65 billion in the Massachusetts economy. We have a huge focus, obviously, on housing, so these projects are estimated to have created or supported over 25,000 jobs and build or preserve over 2,800 housing units. As I mentioned, one of the programs that we do oversee is called Property Assessed Clean Energy, or known as PACE. We call it CPACE as well, because we only have a commercial program here. We do not have a residential PACE program, as some states do. And what PACE is, it allows commercial property owners to access finance for energy improvements or new construction projects. And they are billed via special betterment assessments on their property tax bills. So for the benefits of this program for municipalities, it's job creation, you know, bring new jobs in, either through construction, or if it's a, you know, new construction project, things like that, attract new and retain existing business, environmental benefits associated with reducing energy consumption. To the property owners, it allows them access to long-term, non-recourse financing. It doesn't show up as new debt on their balance sheet, and there's no required payoff upon sale of the property. The assessments would run to the new owner if the property is sold that has a PACE lien on it. And for the lenders or the mortgage holders, it improves their cash flow and reduce credit risk from lower operating costs via financing that cannot be accelerated. Capital improvements can also increase the collateral property value. So there is a national commercial PACE market as well. We're not the only state that has a program. Right now, 32 states plus Washington DC have active PACE programs. And there's 40 states and plus DC that have enabling legislation, so that just means their state legislature has... has passed a statute enabling PACE, but they just don't have an active program quite yet. And as of June 2025, $9.7 billion has been financed for over 3,500 projects. And that graph at the bottom of this page just shows you CPACE dollars funded by building type. So nationally, hospitality is the most used sector, followed by office and retail, and so on. Here in New England, there's a lot of other states that have PACE programs. Some have been around for a while, such as Connecticut. They kind of have the gold standard of a program. They've been around since 2011, and they are administered by the Connecticut Green Bank. Rhode Island has enabling legislation, and they are sponsored by the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank. New Hampshire is working on getting their program ready, as is Maine. And then currently Vermont is the only state in New England that doesn't have a PACE program or enabling legislation. And the graph there just goes by CPACE projects about by amount of finance, so you can see that around 20% of the deals are considered small deals that are $500,000 or less. Median deals are $500,000 to $4.9 million, it's 46%, and the larger deals, anything over $5 million, is 34%. Our program in Massachusetts launched in the summer of 2020. First, it was just for retrofit, so it was only for existing buildings. Commercial properties could apply for the financing. New construction became eligible in May of 2023. Mass Development is the program administrator, but we also work with the Department of Energy Resources, the DOEAR. They are like the technical administrators of the program. They write our technical guidelines, and they have to approve the project as well for it to move forward. We have a lot more information on our website that we can refer folks to, including our approval requirements, the guidelines, financing documents, and an RFI for new capital providers on the massdevelopment.com under the Green Finance page. Our PACE guidelines, currently we are on version 2.1. They were updated in March 2025, and it was just some updates for new construction eligibility. This slide is the PACE flow of funds. It just goes over how the financing works in a PACE transaction. So it's all private capital providers or CPs. They extend the financing and are repaid via the betterment assessments, which is collected by the municipality, which is why PACE is a voluntary program. So the financing is provided to the property owner upfront by one of these private capital providers. Property owner installs the energy improvements, or it's a new construction project, and then they start to pay the betterment assessment. Usually what a municipality does is they just add the betterment assessment to the property tax. So if Hatfield, I don't know how you folks bill, but if you're annually or semi-annually or quarterly, that's how often the PACE kind of repayment schedule will get tailored to. It's a max period of 20 years. So let's say you're quarterly in your property taxes, and that's how you want to bill for the betterment assessments. These properties, any project that has a closing in Hatfield, they'd be four payments every year for 20 years, and that's how that would work. So the municipality, like I said, builds and collects that, and they send it to our MDFA paying agent. MDFA, that's Mass Development. Our paying agent is Zion's Bank. So the paying agent receives and disperses the betterment assessment and sends it back to the original capital provider that provided the financing. These are the eligible properties for new construction and existing PACE pathways. So obviously, commercial and industrial, so like office buildings, malls, hotels, restaurants, manufacturers, non-for-profits can qualify for CPACE financing, usually if they have a pilot agreement with the local municipality, or if the municipality has the ability to generate a property tax bill for them and put, you know, zero dollars on it, and then they can put the betterment assessment byline on the property tax. And then multifamily housing qualifies as a commercial building, but it needs to be five units or more. These are just some of the eligible measures that are applicable for CPACE financing. Our guidelines list all of the eligible measures that are qualifying for CPACE. So in the energy efficiency side, if a building owner is looking to do, you know, a new energy management system, new insulation or air sealing, replace their HVAC system, replace boilers or furnaces, replace lighting, or new energy recovery and redistribution systems, that's all qualifying for PACE. On the renewable energy side, the most popular kind of increases we get are for solar panel installation, solar hot water, or geothermal. These next few slides are just some of the case studies that we've closed so far. This was actually the very first PACE deal that was closed in Massachusetts in Greenfield, Mass. It was a blighted historic 12,000 square foot building that was rescued and transformed. The system, building systems needed major upgrades, and this was actually a retroactive financing, where PACE was financed after the improvements. There is a retroactive window. And it was obviously the energy improvements into a fixed 20-year term, as I mentioned earlier. 20 years is the max repayment schedule. They installed a solar PD system on the roof, efficient electrification of space heating, energy recovery ventilation, LED lighting and controls, and improvements to the windows and insulation. The lifetime energy savings is 189,000 kilowatts. Capital provider is, on this deal, was Nuveen Green Capital. And the mortgage holder that provided consent is Berkshire Bank. I'll go into why we included that in a minute or two. And the amount of financing here was $450,000 over 20 years. Being repaid over 20 years, I should say. This next one was out in Boston, over by Logan Airport. It was a 120,000 square foot mixed-use warehouse building that had 13 commercial tenants. Similar energy improvements made from the previous slide. The only thing I'll add here is they also did a new roof. You can qualify for PACE financing for a new roof. Larger lifetime energy efficiency savings here, over 1.5 million kilowatts. Nuveen was the capital provider again. The mortgage holder here was People's United Bank, the slightly higher financing amount of 780, just over $787,000, being repaid over 20 years. Then again, another cargo ventures project also by the airport, slightly larger building, 150,000 square foot building with a four-story office space and attached distribution center. Again, all similar improvements from the previous slides, as well as some building envelope upgrades and air sealing upgrades. Nuveen, again, was our capital provider. They've been very popular here in Massachusetts. M&amp;T Bank was our mortgage holder on this one. The thing of note on this project is the ground lease acknowledgement. Since this is by the airport in Boston, Massport actually owned the land here, so they had to provide a ground lease acknowledgement, so it's basically another layer of approvals that needed to go through for this deal to close, and the amount of financing was just over $1.1 million. And this was our most recent deal down in New Bedford. It was a seafood processing and distribution facility. This was strictly a solar panel installation project and roof replacement, so it'd be solar-ready. This was Amalgam Bank's first PACE deal in the States, and then Berkshire Bank, again, was the mortgage holder that provided consent. So they're pretty familiar with PACE, and a financing amount of just over $1.1 million again. So the key elements of PACE. So obviously, the municipal opt-in is required. We did have a property owner approach us in Hatfield about their interest in pursuing CPACE financing. I will note, they haven't officially applied yet, so I won't know who the property owner is. But this is how kind of the conversation kicked off, first with Andrew, and, you know, brought us here tonight. I mentioned the max financing is 20 years. That's dependent on the useful life of all the project measures. For retrofit projects, so for existing buildings, currently, the energy cost savings must exceed the cost of improvements, including any financing costs and associated fees. So that's basically what we call the SIR requirement. The DOEAR requires there be like a savings-to-investment ratio, and that ratio needs to be greater than one. So there is that SIR requirement for any of the retrofit application pathways. There is no limit or maximum financing cost as well. If the property is sold, the remaining PACE assessment and PACE lien stays with the property and transfers to the new owner. There is retroactive consideration for unsold improvements. There's a, usually it's an 18th month window. But usually what starts the clock there is, once they get the certificate of occupancy, that's when the clock starts ticking on the retroactive consideration. And it's all third-party private financing. No public funds are used in our CPACE program. And currently, we do have an open, ongoing RFI for more PACE Massachusetts capital providers. Right now, we have 17 organizations that we've registered on our registry. Continuing on here, the PACE application must be approved by DOEAR and Mass Development for financing to close. The mortgage holder's written consent is required as well, so if there's a mortgage on the property, they need to give us that written consent where the deal can't go forward. That's why we note on all those case studies who the mortgage holder was. Once the deal is going to close, the betterment assessment and PACE lien is placed at closing. Mass Development's council prepares all the closing documents and handles the recording at the registry. The lien is assigned to the town or city, then assigned to Mass Development, and then to the capital provider. The capital provider holds enforcement rights to pursue remedies in a default. If that does happen, PACE cannot be accelerated. It's only the unpaid bill assessment can be pursued in a default. And if there is a default, any municipal liens are senior to the PACE lien. PACE lien is senior to the private mortgage holder in a default. So basically, you know, in a scenario, if someone's in a default, and let's say they're not paying their property taxes, the town has precedence and gets paid first, so you are senior to any of the PACE lien, and then PACE, and then the private mortgage holder. And then at this month, we have 80 participating municipalities. Bill Ricco was the number 80 that got us there. Here are all the 80 of them listed alphabetically for the PACE communities that have opted in. And then just a map kind of showing you the geographic spread we have across the state so far of these 80 communities. And then wrapping up here, I didn't make this slide. Our lawyers did, and they always say that we have to include this. They love this slide. It's a little bit of a crazy slide. There's a lot going on here, but essentially, it's the commercial PACE structure. It's the structure of any PACE deal. It's all the different entities and how they kind of interact with each other, who's responsible for what, and all the different kind of things that go on in a PACE transaction. This is included too in our guidelines document that's available on our website. And this is just our team. We're a small team at Mass Development. There's only three of us. Wendy O'Malley has been at Mass Development for a while. She started the CPACE program. And I work with my colleague, Rob Dolan. He covers the southern region and greater Boston area of the state. I cover the west, central, and north regions of the state. But that is the presentation. I know it's a lot of information, so I'm happy to circle back on any slides or answer any questions or listen to any comments you may have.
Okay, I'm just trying to wrap my head around this. So if I got this right, and if I understand it correctly, the Commonwealth established the Commercial Sustainable Energy Program, and it's known as the Massachusetts Property Assessed Clean Energy Program. And it's in your setup to provide a financing mechanism to private owners of commercial and industrial properties for certain qualifying commercial energy improvements. So if, what is the process? If, does that mean anybody in our town, if we decide to accept this, can apply? If they meet the qualifications, or what is the whole purpose of? And this is all private funds. It's not by the town. The town's in any, no way responsible for any of this money or financing. Is that correct? Or just to simplify things, if we say we're part of this program, then anybody in our town, if they qualify, can participate? Is that how this works?
Correct, yes. So it's, like you said, it's a finance mechanism, so it just gives property owners access to additional kind of ways to get access to financing. So they might be, they might have exhausted their traditional lending options, and that's why they go to, you know, a PACE program. Or, you know, the fact that it's attached to the property, and it's non-recourse financing, which means it can't be accelerated, that might be the reason why they pursue it. And the way it is, is that the town works with us, Mass Development, and the capital provider. You guys, kind of like I said, are the recollection mechanism, where you are kind of billing the repayment on the property tax bill. And you receive the repayment, and you send it on to our paying agency and banks. You kind of are a partner in this. But like you said, the town's not on the hook for anything financially reliable, anything like that. Mass Development, and we have a consultant too called Munichap. Munichap and Mass Development will work with the town on any kind of PACE deal that does come forward. Like I said, there was an interested property owner. They haven't officially applied yet. But what would happen is, if they do apply, and they get their application approved by us, Mass Development, and by the DOEAR, you would notify the town that we have an application that was approved. We would work on executing the Municipal Assessment and Assignment Agreement, which is basically just after, that happens after the opt-in vote. That's just the master agreement for any kind of PACE transaction. It's, again, outlines who's responsible for what, and all the different kind of key contacts on the municipal side, on Mass Development's side, and the capital provider's side, and the property owner. And then, you know, if we need to, we can work with the town's assessment department or the finance department. If they're unfamiliar with the betterment assessment process, we can work with them and engage with them on, you know, educating on them how that works. I know I mentioned it to Andrew earlier, the tax system that you use. I'm not familiar with it, but Munichap, they're like an expert in municipal tax software, so I'm sure they're aware of the software that you guys use, and they can, if we need to bring them in, they can help. And that's also at no cost of the town. Mass Development absorbs that cost.
So, I mean, also, these renovations or buildings have to abide by energy, energy-efficient buildings? Is that what they have to build?
So, right now, the way it's governed is that there's different application pathways. So for new construction, there's a number of different pathways that a property owner could apply under, and DOEAR writes the specifications for how they become eligible. There is like, you know, they are incentivizing, you know, all-electric passive house construction, but there is a pathway currently for like mixed-fuel projects to access this financing. So they kind of have it as a tiered system, where if you want the, for new construction, it's based off something called the TECC, which is the Total Eligible Construction Costs. So if it's new construction, the max TEC percentage you can get is 35%, and then on the low end, it's 25%. For retrofits, for existing buildings, you can use CPACE financing to pay for 100% of the project. There is no TECC calculation. And the way retrofits is, there's a list of eligible measures that are basically like pre-approved measures, where like, you know, if you're replacing your boiler furnace that's, you know, kind of about to kick the bucket, that's approved for CPACE financing. You know, if you want to put a solar, you know, system on your roof, that's, you can use that and finance it 100% with CPACE. So there's, our guidelines list all the different things for both new construction and retrofits that are eligible for CPACE financing.
So what's the town's downside?
The downside, if we put it like that, I guess, is for any project that closes, like you said, it will take some effort on the town's staff, I guess, to work with that, to get the betterment assessment on the property tax. Because like I said, the town is kind of the recollection or the repayment mechanism. So it does take, you know, not, it's not going to be substantial, because we're not looking at, you know, every town's different, obviously, with their commercial property kind of base. A town like Hatfield, I don't anticipate you guys getting an influx of CPACE increase, you know. You know, we've only had a couple of deals closed in Boston, for example, too. So CPACE is very unique. It's a very unique form of financing. It's usually, like I said, the financing kind of a last resort, where they've exhausted their traditional lending opportunities, because it's not like the interest rate is any better on CPACE than traditional financing. It's still kind of market-based interest rates. So I would say the biggest downside, if we put it that way, is going to be just the effort required by staff if there's a deal closed, to kind of work with the property owner, and us to get it on the property tax bill for that 20-year repayment window.
And so since we're the collection agency, essentially, if there is a default, who has to foot the bill for the litigation to be able to collect our repayment? Is the town on the hook for litigating that, and then we make the disbursements first to make ourselves whole, and then the rest goes to you, or do you guys cover that litigation? How does that work?
So that goes to, back to the capital provider. The capital provider holds all kind of the enforcement rights to pursue in a default scenario. The town wouldn't be on the hook for any of the litigation. If, like I said, like a PACE kind of property goes delinquent, it's only the unpaid bill amounts can be pursued. So it's not the whole financing that can be accelerated and recollected. But essentially, it would just go through the normal foreclosure process if it does. And we would work with the capital provider and the town. We haven't had this happen. We haven't had this happen yet, so I haven't, I don't have experience with it. Hopefully, I won't have any experience with it, but I understand the question. But the capital provider kind of would pursue the necessary remedies in the default scenario. And if, if it goes that far through the normal kind of foreclosure process.
Okay, and my other question that I have is how does this work with commercial agricultural businesses? I didn't see it mentioned anywhere.
They could call, they could qualify for CPace financing if they wish. I, we don't have an example yet of an agricultural property owner applying for CPace, but there are, like, I know some other states have a resiliency component to their CPace program. We right now don't have a resiliency part of our program. The only kind of thing that could be qualified as resiliency is that we do allow for microgrids to qualify for CPace financing. But if they go through any of the list of eligible measures to either to any kind of buildings they have on the property or, like I said, they want to install solar or anything like that, they can apply for CPace financing. But essentially, what qualifies you for CPace is any kind of improvements that are permanently affixed to a building that can receive a property tax bill at the end of the day. We are looking at potentially expanding into resiliency, but that would take an act of the legislature to do that. And that, that takes time. They have their whole process and procedures as well that we have to contend with.
We have a good aquaculture example on here, so agriculture should be next. Any question?
Yeah, no, like I said, for resiliency, it's something that I know other states have explored for those purposes too. So hopefully, one day, we can get the state legislature to adopt that.
So we put this on the agenda tonight just as an overview. If the board does wish to proceed with this at a future meeting, you could take a vote to accept pace locally. I thought it'd be a lot of information to absorb tonight, then also try to take a vote. I think it's worth just looking at it. Tammy in the treasurer's office did see this as well, so she didn't think that it would be too much of a burden on her office. If we did intend to go in that direction, I think Luke was asking the right questions around what is the burden on the town, what sorts of things will we need to take on? I think it's very limited risk for us and not a ton of staff time, so it'd probably be fine. If there is an interested person who's looking at using this for making investments on their property, and it's probably something the town could take on, but it's your decision. I think there's certainly pros and cons.
I think the last question that I have is how come this isn't already legislated and open to all towns to adopt? How come we have to adopt?
By the local option.
Right, why the local option?
Good question for Connor.
It's basically, the way pace is structured nationally too is that it's either administered on a statewide basis or at a county basis. For that, because basically that, the local adoption part is like the key part of pace. Because like, there is no way to, it's all connected to the property tax. The property tax is like, you know, cycles the way kind of it's billed and repaid. So that's why the local option was the avenue. I know like some other states do it on a county, on a county basis, but like they have a strong county government in those states. Massachusetts, we have strong local government, so that's why we went with this. I wasn't here when the state legislature passed it, but I imagine that's why they went through that avenue where they were giving, basically giving local towns and cities the option where you guys want to do this, if you want to, it's another tool in like your toolbox for commercial property owners. Especially as like, you know, we're seeing, you know, some towns and cities in the greater Boston area, for example, are passing ordinances requiring kind of this decarbonization where they're making their large commercial property owners completely decarbonized by a certain, you know, usually by 2050 is the limit. But the state also might be getting ready to do that. They have a program called ELBER, which is the Large Building Emissions Reduction, which is going to require any building, I believe, over 20,000 square feet to start reporting their climate emissions data to the state. That could easily turn in a couple of years, you know, just speculating here, but that could easily turn to requiring those buildings to start decarbonizing as well because that's what Boston did, that's what Cambridge did, that's what Newton's doing. So basically, like I said, I think the state wanted just to pass this program as an act of the legislature to give it to towns and cities as an option if they want to enroll into this program and give their local property owners an option to access additional financing.
It's actually kind of nice that it doesn't act as a mandate that every town has to figure out how to do this and instead have the opt-in.
That makes, that makes sense now that it's explained. It's kind of nice.
I mean, we want to sleep on this and just bring it up at our next meeting.
Yeah, give it some time.
I appreciate the presentation. It sounds, there's a lot of positives to this, but we just want to sleep on it and digest everything you've said.
No, I totally understand. It's a lot of information. And it's totally okay if you guys need to take some time to think about it and vote at your next meeting.
And any questions, you can send to me and I can get to Connor and we can make sure we check on anything. I think you asked the main questions that I was considering, so yeah, we'll take some time with it.
Yeah, and I'm happy to do any follow-up meetings as needed as well if there's any other questions.
Great.
Perfect. Well, thank you, Connor. I do appreciate the presentation, and we'll bring it up at our next meeting again. And hopefully, we get on board.
Great, yeah. And thank you again for allowing the remote presentation ability. I appreciate that, and I hope everyone has a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, now we'll go back to topic four, okay.
And this actually just kind of blends nicely into the rest of our agenda, which is just DPW report and Town Administrator Report. So keeping an eye on the time, we've already, you know, taken up a good amount of time this evening. So I will go over the day pond dredge update and then go right into the DPW report and Town Administrator Report. That sounds good to everybody. So day pond dredge, I've got some good news. We did have on your agenda to try to get a contract approved tonight. We don't have a contract yet. We just finished reviewing references for our low bidder today. But the low bidder is soon to be a neighbor of ours. It's Western Earthworks, who are planning to move into town. They came in below all the other bids, obviously, as the low bidder, but significantly lower and within budget. It was reviewed by our project engineers, TRC. It looked good to them. They had a couple of questions on some of their figures, which we'll talk through with them. But as a contract price, it made sense. I called their references. They've done a number of the watering and culvert replacement and large excavation projects for towns near us and have gotten really good reviews. So they've worked for some great engineering firms and towns and have done a good job. And they really, it mattered to them a lot to put in a competitive bid on this project because they're going to be our neighbors soon. They're moving to town. They really want to do this project.
So do you know when the contract would be here for us to?
By your next meeting at the latest. If we have it done early and their schedule would allow them to start work earlier, then I might even recommend we have a quick meeting to sign a contract sooner. But we'll start the contracting process with them. We'll hold a pre-construction meeting with DRC, the engineers, and some others, and we'll get that underway. But the goal was to try to do the work beginning in January. We should be on that path. So we'll have the contract by your next meeting in mid-December at the latest.
Yeah, there also, there was some discussion of Christmas vacation, but I'm not sure it's going to be there. It might be, it might be.
If we have the contract done by then, we'll have the meeting with them, we could start that. The only other holdup we have is just finalizing license agreements or easements with the neighboring property owners. But they've been, you know, on board this whole way. We just need to sign some paperwork with them.
Perfect, sounds good.
Should have all that to go to you by December. And it was, you know, we had five bids, all good firms, some folks closer, some folks further away. But it's a very competitive bid from Earthworks, Western Earthworks. Okay, so just quickly, this is in the DPW director's report, but it goes for everybody. The capital plans are due on December 1st, so all departments are starting to get me their capital requests. If this group has any, you know, capital requests we want us to look at, just let me know, and I'll be happy to submit anything for the select board for Town Hall. I do have an application that I'll be putting in for town building security that we discussed before on access controls and maybe some cameras involved. I care less about the cameras and more about the access controls, but we'll talk about that. Marlo has been working on the applications for DPW, including a couple that went to the CPC, Community Preservation Committee. He's also been trying to work better with EverSource to fix a few streetlight issues. Looking for a master list of all our streetlights and getting, making sure that the ones that haven't been converted LED are finally converted. That was a project that had been begun with the Green Communities Program. I know it is saving us a decent amount of money each year, which is great. We, as I mentioned, the tree lighting ceremony is in early December. Marlo's team has been providing some nice support to Jerry as well in getting lights set for that. We're looking good for readiness for snow and ice, which is great. We've got plow sticks out there and looks like we're ready to go. As in between our last meeting and today, as you know, the large silver maple outside, Town Hall was taken down successfully. We had some loaming that was done on those areas where the trucks out there did do some damage. Still are waiting for the bald cypress across the street to be taken down as well. We're in great shape moving forward on the roof project. Design is moving forward well. They did an interim presentation to us recently and had a lot of good information about the role that the rooftop structures have played as well. The electric units and other things have played in some of the leaks that have occurred. So that will definitely be part of their proposal for fixing that. Still in design mode, but we should be moving towards bids in a couple of months at the latest. Hatfield Elementary School boilers, we've got a lot of good news on this project. So the boiler project, the design is done. We're going out to bid a week from Wednesday, no, starting December 3rd. This week, we'll be putting out the initial notice that we have to put out. But bids will open December 3rd. We'll do a walkthrough December 10th, and I think we'll close bids as early as mid-December. So the other good news there is that after another look through the cost estimates, the cost estimates have come way down to be very much within our budget. It's really in the $300,000 range now for replacing those boilers. And we budgeted closer to 600, so that's very good news there. Route 5, by Monday, we should be receiving from Gilaher the results of their cambering and flushing work. CEI is staying on them for this, but as I said before, we're also briefing the state, briefing our attorney, and we'll have more information there. Marlo's team did a lot of work on the installation of the new trash compactor. In case residents, you know, reach out about this, the feed hopper height is higher than the previous one. That meets code, that meets OSHA standards. We've made some adjustments to feeding that hopper and has added some fall protection there. It's a work in progress. If there's any concerns that you're hearing from residents about the height of that, about working with that, let us know. But Marlo's just working to make sure that's safe for everybody involved. Pavement management project is expected to start in early December, so that's moving along nicely. And everything else on here, there aren't many changes from the last time that we talked. Dwayne and Marlo putting some good work in on the unpaved roads grant, which will be opening soon. They're hoping to put a very competitive proposal for some work that needs to happen out on Stray Road. That would be our priority. PVPC has also reached out with interest in doing some assessment work on other unpaved roads around town unrelated to this grant. So we'll probably be working with them on looking at any other unpaved roads we have out there. They'll put kind of a regional plan together to try to get more funding our way as well. So we appreciate that. I'll pause right there for a second. Any questions on the DPW report?
No. I mean, I know we're waiting on the camera report from Gilaher and compare it to things.
What we have, yeah. And we, there should be some helpful information coming out of that.
I hope so, okay, good.
And I think, you know, as long as that comes in on time, we could look at your next meeting, having another meeting with the engineers and contractor and residents. And if not, the next meeting, we'll do it in early January, but we need to get that to happen. And I'm doing my best to keep residents aware of the situation. I think the board is too. It's, people are understandably losing patience. So health insurance update.
Well, before you get to, under DPW, we have a change order, right?
Oh, my goodness, yes. Thank you very much for a reminder there. So we received yesterday, got a heads up about this coming. This was a town-initiated change order request. This is on the asphalt top course. This is for getting the binder coat done early so that we can better access the site and get our vehicles and everything on it throughout the winter season. So this was something that our team had asked for. All this is in here. It's a $18,000 change. We're in the position now where everything is very much within budget, any changes that we need to make because we're still working through that contingency in the project, and we have these additional funds in the form of a USDA grant as well. So we're under budget, we're under, way under the contingency top limit. And all of that, after a certain point, it's funded by this grant, so it's not even town money at this point. Still means we want to protect it and only pay for things that make sense.
So before I enter canyon motion, do you have any, any comments from my colleagues?
I just don't understand why this is a change. Wasn't this going to happen anyhow?
Right. I thought this was a, this is a change to get the, the top course, so do the binder course asphalt in the fall. So that would be a change if they are breaking it out into two, two pieces of work and has it done sooner rather than the work all in the spring.
But it was going to be done either way, so why does it cost more?
Realistically, I think the change order should only be for the mobilization for them to come back in the spring and grind around the structures and then lay the top. It's the same amount of work.
Right, they're, they're.
You still have to put binder and then top it.
All they're changing is when they're doing it. They're still doing it.
If you're doing a binder and you're doing asphalt, then it's really just for two mobilizations. So how much does a mobilization cost? And the question is, does it really cost $18,000 for mobilization? Yeah, it doesn't.
No. That's quite an add, so.
Is there a price that we'd be comfortable with as a group? If we try to bring it down to that amount and I can, we can negotiate with the contractor? See if we can get it down to that?
I mean, it says right in their proposal that this proposal includes all necessary labor, equipment, materials required to complete the asphalt top course paving in spring. Scope of work also includes a separate mobilization to mill the binder course around the manhole frame. So realistically, this change order should only be for that second mobilization.
Yep.
The rest of this work should have already been budgeted for and allocated for.
Yep.
So I guess that's an answer for them of what the second mobilization costs. To me, it would not be more than $2,500 at the top end. I'm not sure where this company's coming out of, the paving company, but yeah.
They want to ask that question.
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
We want to have that question answered before we move on this change order.
I'll make sure. Yeah, so they have the Schultz costs and the, yeah, but it's all only for that one thing. Well, I wonder if this, it's possible that the paving wasn't budgeted because it looks like they're saying, it almost makes it look like they're adding this, the whole thing.
It does look like they're adding it, but.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure it was originally in there. That's on me to figure out.
I'd find it hard to believe that repaving when they were done isn't in there, but maybe.
I mean, it's possible they're paving more, are they paving more than they originally are going to pave? Is that what they're saying?
Yeah, and then if that, if that's the case, if they are asking for additional pavement, some sort of data, whether square footage price, like how much additional area is being paved?
Says installed asphalt top course and spring.
Right, which is, it makes it look like it's new. This is new work, right? Okay. So they're charging $2,500 for the separate mobilization, $4,900 for the binder trench paving, $1,600 for the milling. So it is, it is only $2,500 they're charging for the mobilization. It's good. I guess it's just a question of is this a separate piece that wasn't budgeted initially? And if that's the case, then it's not terribly unreasonable.
We just want to understand if that's so. It might be perfectly fine, but we just want our questions answered, that's all.
If, if we find out this wasn't budgeted in the first place and that this just specifies the two mobilizations and the paving, could the board approve it in that way? And would you authorize me to sign off on it? And would you authorize me to sign off on it if that's the case, that it wasn't budgeted in the first place? Or we still have questions about pricing?
I don't have a problem with that. If it wasn't budgeted, and this is.
Just so we don't hold them up.
The town is requesting to have done.
Yeah, this was requested by the town.
I only can speak for myself, I don't know how my colleagues feel about it.
Yeah, it's just not very well explained as to what we're signing.
And that's partially my mistake for not giving the extra info.
Yeah, I think if those questions were, were okay, knowing that it's not already in the budget.
I mean, it's not uncommon for a project, if you're within budget, to add a couple of things that were not included.
Yep, yeah.
We just want to know if this was originally included or not, or.
Just don't want to pay for the same thing twice, yeah.
All right, so as long as we find out it wasn't originally included, would you be comfortable with me signing off on this? I can also add it to a future meeting of yours, but I know they want to get going with it in that binder code.
Yeah, they're going to have to, because the plants are going to close pretty soon.
Basically done.
Because they already are.
So, I think just a simple drafted email to us with.
With that confirmation?
Yeah.
Great. I'll do that, maybe, if I can treat Luke as the point person on this, if that sounds in line with our understanding tonight, after I get back.
So, what you were saying, you want a motion to approve this, provided it was something that was not included in the budget, that's the way you'd want the motion?
I think that'd be great, yeah.
Okay, so I'll make that motion. I'll make a motion to accept this change order, provided it was not originally included in the budget. And if, and if it was not, then Andrew can sign off on it. How's that sound? Does that make sense?
That sounds good to me. I'll second that.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made, motion seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Right, right.
Motion carries, okay.
Excellent. I'll confirm that with you tomorrow.
Okay.
Sounds good, thank you. Thanks, everyone. Okay, so that's that. Last on the agenda would be town administrator update. So, health insurance, I'm trying to put together one more meeting with the PEC, just to confirm that they plan to vote no on the GIC proposal. They've given me all indications that they're just not ready to make that move this time, which is very similar to what a lot of towns are dealing with, just the short timeline and large change. It doesn't seem like it's something they're comfortable with. We're still waiting on a proposal from MIA to see where that would come in, because the MIA proposal could be quite good for us, in that it keeps the Blue Cross Blue Shield Insurance, but has some more staff capacity and some other features that make it an attractive set of benefits, while also maybe a better cost for the town. So, we're waiting on that. I have been elected to the Executive Committee of the Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust.
Congratulations.
And, and also condolences, yeah, both of those things. It's, it's been eye-opening so far. There's just a lot of work that goes on this group. There's not a lot of staff right now from the Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust after the resignation of, retirement of their executive director. We have voted to bring on an interim consultant that will act as essentially the executive director, and also add a lot of value, I think, in helping to figure out what the trust can do to keep themselves solvent right now and provide a better situation for the towns. The consultant will be the Hillbrook Group. It looks like a strong firm with a lot of experience in health insurance, was part of that decision-making, and I think they'll be useful, but it is going to be a tough situation for the trust, and I'm glad that we're looking at other options. But I also, you know, since we're in the trust right now, would like them to try to survive. But it's a difficult position that they're in right now. I'll keep it there for right now on health insurance. Farm Museum, we had a great meeting recently. I appreciate Luke being there with folks from Historical Society, from the town, and with our architect, talk about how that project is coming along and what the decision points are there. We had some, some thoughts about other ways that the project could continue with some upgrades as well on power and lighting, ventilation, and other things. But I think we have a good understanding of how we want to strengthen up the siding there without necessarily going with the highest cost option, and so I think we've got some good options there. We'll be getting plans soon from the architect on that, as well as getting ready to apply for grants from the state to support that work. Ditch mapping, CEI is working really quickly on this project. We've had a good experience on this. They have preliminary maps showing what they think the ditch network looks like for us. I'll share those with this group as well, I want you to see those. And we're planning a public outreach meeting that will happen most likely in early to mid-January, because I know a lot of folks do have questions about this project. CEI is in the field now, so if people do ask you, who are these folks who are out there looking around these ditch areas? CEI is doing this work, is doing a great job, just trying to verify those, those maps, doing some ground truthing, and figuring out what the condition of these ditches is and what best management practices will look like for maintaining these moving forward. I do want to add that CEI has some extra budget on this project, and they are willing to add any areas that we know of in town that are prone to flooding. So, if you know of any flood areas, doesn't necessarily have to be connected to ditches or even culverts or other infrastructure, if we just know there's areas in town that flood regularly, CEI should be able to take a look at those and help us figure out some management practices there as well. So, please follow up with me, or if anyone watching wants to follow up, any places where you want to have checked out. I know Primrose Path, it sounds like is a good place to check out. Anywhere else that you have in mind, that could be very useful. And then opioid settlement funds task force, so we had a really good meeting recently with a representative from the state's Mosaic Rise Group. This is the state organization that's tasked with trying to help municipalities in their opioid responses, so that was very helpful in getting some more guidance on what we can and can't use the funds on. I think our plans are really taking shapes. You know, the community survey showed that connections to care and then education prevention are the areas that townspeople want us to focus on. So, we'll plan to bring a detailed budget to this group soon, but we have some plans to help with some focus groups, some better resource guides, and then some improved education and prevention efforts, including some community events and other things. And I think it's going to look really good. And then comprehensive plan implementation, that committee did a first review of just basically all the goals that were in the comprehensive plan and the action plan, looked at what's already underway, what are different groups already doing, and then looking at who's tasked with them on paper, who's doing it in reality, and then who would it make sense to have some meetings with to try to talk about how they can be supported in getting some of these things done. So, that was a good once through the plan, and we're going to get some help from PPPC in looking at what next steps look like, but the group is making some good progress there, and I think you'll start to hear more from them. They'll probably come to a meeting here to talk about what the board can take the lead on, and some other options for implementing that plan. So, I'll leave it there for now, if there's any questions at all.
No, I mean, we have a new firefighter appointment?
Yes, you do.
Yes.
You do. And that's Trevor, Trevor Sang, who was in here last week, meeting some folks. He's one of our per diem firefighters. Yeah, he's definitely, he's in Amherst, not far, in Seans, eager to help us out, which is great. The chief also did something wise and went through the roster to figure out if there's anybody who hasn't really been showing up, and who maybe should resign from that per diem role. So, I do know a few folks did decide to leave the roster that just weren't really able to make any call times. So, I think that was a good thing for the department as well. I don't know if the captain wants to add anything to that.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, we have to outfit these people with gear, and we generally outfit all of the per diem people with the used gear that we already own. So, with more people coming onboard, we only have a limited number of in-date stuff to be able to turn out to people, so kind of getting rid of the, asking the people who don't show up to resign frees up the gear that we can then outfit other people with. So, it's, it was a good thing, so.
Yep.
I think it was about five, five people who ended up leaving, they just didn't have time commitments to be able to help us as, in the original capacity they thought they were going to be able to, whether professional or personal for reasons, and, and so we were able to return that gear back into, into service. So, now when we hire on a new person like this.
Nice.
We have quality gear that we can outfit them with, so.
Do we have any other unfinished business?
I had a question for Andrew on where are we at with the electronic timekeeping?
I have a giant spreadsheet that Tammy and I are working through that has basically information about every single employee, about what their schedule is, what their benefits are, time off, everything else, supervisor, who signs off on their pay sheets, all of this. And then once we've completed that, that goes back to Harper's, and then they'll start activating things. So, we're working our way through that. I think we can probably break it down so they're getting, we're getting them the information they need to start the individual departments we want to start first. We're going to pilot it just with a few folks here in town hall to make sure the treasurer's office is comfortable with it, and then we'll get it out to the priority departments we had of fire and DPW, and then schools will be last. That'll be the biggest undertaking, and we'll do them last.
Be nice if we could have, like, roll it out in a fashion, so it's like, you know, fire, police, DPW first, like you said.
Yep.
Town hall second, and then have the schools ready to go for the start of the school year would be ideal.
Yeah, I think that sounds great. Town hall, we're just going to, a couple people in town hall will do first, just so that we feel comfortable.
Yeah.
Using it.
That makes sense.
Smaller scale, the treasurer's office, and, yeah, we'll do that, but then, you know, we got to get fire and DPW done as soon as we can.
Sounds good.
It makes the most sense for.
Any other unfinished business?
I have none.
I want to remind everybody again, December 2nd, elementary school, please come. We need the quorum, we need to get our book, housekeeping books in order, so it just, help you and be there, that's all. So, again, thank you, and happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and you and yours, and wishing everybody happy holidays.